Call to board of meeting and planning board for Monday, August twenty six at seven oh eight.
Pursuant to chapter two of the acts of twenty twenty-three, this meeting will be conducted in person and as the courtesy via remote means in accordance with the applicable law. But please note that while an option, we'll note attendance and the participation of being invited at the courtesy of the public board members. The meeting will not be suspended or terminated technological problems in the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members in the public wish to watch the meeting, they do so by watching by using the zoom information provided. Viewers can also watch at HTTPS. Backslash the local scene. Of dot media backslash ducks free. For more information.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Next item we have is open forum, not currently on the agenda. We weren't on the board. Nothing to my left. Right, all right. Moving on administrative items. Minutes, August twelfth. Entertainment thing, we we have those, right? Right? It's sometimes it is not there.
I do. Do we have them?
No, we don't.
Right, print it out, most everything. So so nobody else got any minutes to that one?
No, she didn't have an attempt.
Okay, so moving on from administrative items now. Conceptual review twenty-three Eagles Nest Road lot line revision.
That would be us.
That's you. All right, you're up.
I'm Freeman Boynton, Duxbury Construction. With me tonight is Nick Roselli and. Is a real estate agent, Lucy Bylon. And. We're kind of hoping that Nick's parcel is big enough that we can cut it into two lots in one way or another. And so we've put together, but we're working on the plan that you see up there. And if we. Kind of create this, this arch. That you see here. And subdivide the parcel in this in this manner here. Um, that it will give us enough frontage and enough area on the two lots to meet your. Uh, requirements currently.
Arch, so you can get the two hundred feet.
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Yep. I can't read quite read the numbers and I don't have the memorized, but we have most of two hundred feet, but. Um, and right now the the lot is divided into two parcels, this one here. And this this line here divides the two properties. And it kind of looks like Nick or somebody added a garage here that ended up over the property line. Um, otherwise we'd probably be able to do it by right.
As I said, it's it's two separate properties already.
Correct. So we could potentially take the garage off and this would be a grandfathered lot, I would think.
That's actually the, that's the master bedroom addition.
Okay, so we could take the master bedroom addition off and.
Catch to the other side of that.
Yeah, exactly.
Like the country was, yeah.
Um, but we're thinking that that we want to do it in this manner here. We'd create this cul-de-sac and I think your bylaws require. A fourteen-foot road that we would cut through here to accommodate less than three lots and put in some uh. A rain garden or something of that nature to pick up the water off of that. I think it's sure enough that hopefully you guys wouldn't require. An eight-inch water main and fire hydrants and all that kind of stuff. Um, so we just wanted to get together with you guys and. Get your opinion of this project before we. Finish it up.
Interesting. So did did both of the lots currently have two hundred feet of frontage?
No. They don't.
So I should, maybe I can add something here. This. When this Eagles Nest Road was developed, there were um. My wife's grandfather bought two lots. In the fifties. His house to the left of that line where there's the white line. Well, the black line is going down. And uh. And then. This building built. That addition.
Okay.
And then um. And then we purchased it from the state. And. No disrespect. I'm not quite sure how to say this, but the taxes are pretty high. And. This, no, no kidding.
I don't know.
I don't know. I don't really know how to present that.
I don't know. I don't know who you would have.
I'm looking at myself. Nobody else. Anyhow, so this. Was a means, here's both Freeman's been great and. And discussing this, the planner here also was sort of like looked at this, we presented it to him and he was. Thinking that there were other examples in the past. In Duxbury that. Were around, basically had this sort of design. One, apparently fairly recently, um. So the thought was here is was to uh. Preserve the house. And. What we've done on the left-hand side is beautiful. Again, this is much thanks to uh Freeman because this is. Beautiful conservation area now. Much improvement for the neighborhood. I think we would be able to do the same thing on the right side if that became a lot. So there's a benefit to the community as well.
So how long? How long is the curve, the the entire curve for for both lots along Eagles Nest?
Here's the muse though, when the subdivision was created for Eagles Nest, they required. More like a hundred and sixty feet. So the two lots. Both have a hundred and sixty feet of frontage. So we're trying to get some additional to the lot on the left to make two hundred. And then that arch gives us two hundred on the second lot.
So you're already not conforming on your frontage on the lot you're on. And.
More conforming.
It would be making the left thing about more conforming by adding.
You're expanding. Expanding that, right? My other question was, if you left the lot line long the way it is now. You you brought it in for just to the addition. Fifteen, twenty feet before the addition, right?
Yeah.
And it's gonna be really funky, then jot out fifteen feet down the side. Of the addition. And then trade off land in the back, then you have. Just an A and R to get. The house. Off of the line and then you still have your original second lot.
Correct.
I think, right? I mean, it's really funky, though.
Is it, do you think it would be a grandfathered lot if we reconfigured it though still?
Probably not Freeman because it's in common ownership.
Uh, the two lots in common ownership?
Yes, yeah.
And town's name of emergency.
Yeah, I uh ask you a question because I.
I don't know that automatic emergency.
No, well, it's, I looked it up on the assessors parcel mapping. It's one parcel, five to five acres. On the right.
A subdivision isn't in the record. If I I think common ownership is is gonna hurt it in terms of uh. Pre-existing non-conforming. It doesn't automatically merge for all purposes, but in terms of pre-existing non-conforming, I think the common ownership thing kills my killer.
Okay, then this is another option. To that, it's obviously. A little different. I don't, I have not seen one of these. Not to say that I've got all the experience in the world. Looking at any subdivision plans, but. I mean, it seems feasible, but. At the same time, it might open up a lot more people who want to do. This, you could, you could theoretically have a big lot that's got. Three hundred feet of frontage and put two of these in front of them, now you get two hundred feet each.
Right.
Right, and then we gotta consider what we might open up. At the same time, I could just see people do. Both of them doing it to get to two hundred and then you get, and you get another lot.
What's the benefit of creating a parcel two, that small sliver going down low? Instead of just having parcel one and parcel two? Two larger parcels?
Get two hundred feet of frontage on the first one, right?
Me the one.
Correct. With this, they'll both have two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, you could extend. I mean, we can just extend the the property line over to the. To the beginning of the curve without creating that middle. Parcel two of just under six thousand square feet.
All that middle. Middle parcel is what just represents the two hundred feet area.
And it's got your fifteen feet from the edge of the. Addition on the house.
Okay, the house back to its own property. Yeah, right. When we say the existing lot line that runs through what we said, the master bedroom, right? On the left, on the right end. But that, you're gonna. Why couldn't we just move that to where the proposed lot line is? Don't you get your two hundred feet just on the apex of the circular drive? Which is to what Scott was saying, do we want to open that Pandora's box of future developments?
What if, what am I missing? I mean, I don't think you're missing anything, but if you. If you did, what's what's drawing here, the the, you could A and R the the left-hand lot.
Yeah, right.
But then you'd be, then you'd have to figure out what do you do with the with the with the right-hand lot to make it buildable. But I mean, this drawing, you could A and R the left-hand lot the way it is.
Hmm. And ba- and basically the rest of that jotting around of the lot line is just a trade-off in square footage of the land.
Yeah.
Have you done that with any other lots? Where you had a single solid, say, say, for example, the the the. Decided to do an A and R on the left-hand line. On the right-hand line, has anybody actually come to us and with a a lot that might was more than an acre, but had a narrow front footprint, the narrow. Street sweep and then we allowed them to do that as a solitary lot as opposed to being in a subdivision?
If this was a separate. Lot. Different ownership, it would just be grandfathered anyway at the frontage that it has. So this, this is addressing the question of. If it's definitely all combined as one, which as tags that according to.
And and I think that's a role of pre-existing non-conforming.
So.
But if their change, if the. Property line changed, it's because it's shorter and so they decide, okay, let's do this paper cul-de-sac. Have you allowed that anywhere else?
I I have, I have not seen that. To accommodate creating one lot.
Yes.
I haven't seen that.
So we usually see in subdivisions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did we see that on Harden Hill?
I think they were correct, trying to create a lot more frontage and therefore they did kind of same thing, but it was a different shape.
Harden, Harden Hill is the one we just recently.
Yeah, wasn't it the the subdivision was on the other side and then the extra frontage was on existing?
Yeah.
So it was, it was not quite the same.
Not quite the same. They kind of just broke their lot up. They broke their lot up. Multiple lots up differently.
But in order to create the frontage, they created a cul-de-sac.
Yes, they did. They put in a road with it. Basically, if you if you went in further with a road to cul-de-sac, that's what they created.
Yeah, but what's what's the difference? We don't need a road.
And I don't know. I don't know.
I think they were trying to create more frontage for more lots. Was my understanding.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to, this is all we need. So this is why we drew it this way.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting way of.
What the plumber said. And he thought it was. That's why we meant your your regulations.
I know. And we, we were listing your properties, Lucy, apart because of the taxes, it's not worth. Crying or anything like that. But then spoke to Freeman and actually what was going on on the. It's an interesting story. On the left-hand side, where you see that that turned into a really beautiful view and conservation area. So it's really a nice habitat. We did that with our neighbors. And our neighbors knew we were gonna sell the property because we couldn't keep it. And uh. And I went to see the planner saying, hey, we'd like to create this view for our neighbors. So what can we do? Is there some kind of easement or covenant? So that no one's going to build in front of them. And that's when the planner said, have you considered doing this? And that's when I called Freeman.
Again.
Yes.
Okay, figuring out how to subdivide it.
So that's explains why Lucy's here because we haven't listed.
Yeah, I would say, I mean. Again, just not seeing exactly this before for me. I'd like to, um, we don't have planner to run it by, but guess we'll run it through town council and make sure it just meets. All of our, obviously you're gonna have some waivers on it, but it's gonna be the typical waivers of I'm not really going the road. Yeah, so. Um. I don't think we'd have any issue, any issue with that, but. You know, if they if they say this, you know, meets within what we're doing, I don't see why we wouldn't be able.
Okay.
Able to do it. I think you could do it all in one else swoop. As far as.
Who's gonna own the, who's gonna own the the real property within the semicircle?
Who owns the real property when you do something longer and bigger?
So basically.
It's common ownership for everybody who uses it. In this case, only one person's gonna use it.
Well, no, but I mean, so the way this this lot is depicted. The the new lot doesn't go all the way to Eagles Nest. And so there's a big. There's a half circle.
Well, the half circle is the access.
Right, that's the access.
But but then the access is at the town and so I think.
You mean, you got to extend Eagles Nest to what Wayne's saying, the the boundary of Eagles Nest doesn't, won't extend to the vert to the.
The half circle isn't the access, the half circle is the frontage.
Hmm, yeah, that's the frontage. So then who's who won't, who's gonna own the half moon on the boundary of Eagles Nest? In that case, the. In most cases, if we did two or three. How subdivision they would share, in this case, only one.
Hmm, well, but.
Be their responsibility.
I'm just looking at the way this is depicted. This is the, this is a lot, this is a lot, but that piece is not a part of either lot.
No, it's no different than than a private road. In that that owner of that, and in that case, only the owner of that property would be responsible.
And the owner won't be petitioning the town to take the town, take it over.
Oh, because all it's gonna be is a driveway going across. At the end of the day, you can have a. Driveway. Going on to the lot. So that's interesting.
Um, I raise a concern about this. First, I want to agree with what you were saying earlier about, you know, the. How many of these are there? I'd love to see a query on the GAS. How many parcels are greater than one acre have less than three hundred feet of frontage that could be split? In this way, I'd like to know that because there's definitely. Uh, you know, just the fact that Paul suggested this because Paul Koyote suggested this because he saw. You know, Paul, the engineer had proposed it and justified it on the pride pressing from the games. I don't really like this. I think it it's a variance on the two hundred foot frontage is what it is. And I'd rather see a straight-up request. We would like. An exception to the frontage and and do that, yes or no? We answer that playing these games because they raise all these questions. Who owns it? What's the town's responsibility? What's the owner's responsibility? How many other waivers are we doing? It just doesn't seem like we're going in the right direction. And this is from a waiver's perspective. I understand there's a lot of legal issues involved, there's precedents and all of that, which I can't speak to. But it just doesn't smell right to me.
Well, in a lot of these small ones, there are. Gonna be a. Half dozen to a dozen. Pretty standardized waivers on these, on these small and slowly roads that we give, even if they're putting in for three hogs. Just you don't need a bunch of these other things we require in a full, in a full subdivision. We don't need to do all those types of things, but. And that's why we grant those waivers pretty, pretty freely for that. But this is. This is. I think, interesting.
I think granting a waiver from the frontage requirement would be a much bigger can of worms than.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that was what I, that's what I was gonna say. That's what I was gonna say to tag.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand if you could help.
Yeah, there's no way you're gonna get a variance. On on this. You'd be, you're not gonna get a variance.
On the front.
On the front, and that's what you were proposing. Come on, come in.
No, but I'm just trying to be transparent about it.
No, no, no.
That thing's on the street, acknowledging that.
Right, I think the reality of it. We're trying to be very transparent, which is why we're here.
That's very.
What do you think of this?
Yeah, hmm, yep.
Oh, it was two lots to begin with, so logically.
Yeah, by deed, it's two lots.
By deed instead?
Correct.
By deed, it still mentions two lots, so. So.
But the common ownership probably negates the ability to.
They were probably conforming lots when they were made.
Yes.
But I I think the common ownership kills you.
Yep, I agree.
Yep.
Another question for town.
About that more recently, but why not?
Did she talk about?
It is, it's part of the new EU housing and common ownership rules have changed.
Yes.
Oh, the common ownership rules changed.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's.
Oh.
Yeah, I remember reviewing it. It wasn't really part of what I was actually looking at, but I saw it.
But just, just to be clear, the common ownership rule I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Is when you're. When you get an exception to the zoning bylaw because you have pre-existing non-conforming lots. If there are two non-conforming lots that are in common ownership. You don't get the benefit of both lots. And we've, we dealt with this before.
Yeah. I just don't know if that, it may have been another change.
Maybe that changed.
Yeah, they changed that specifically. They they. Brought it down to ten thousand square feet and seventy-five year frontage, is what I read.
So it doesn't automatically combine unless it's that small?
I don't know. This is what Amy said. Section ten of the act preserves a multiple status of certain lots owned in common by exempting them from the doctrine of merger, which is what I'm trying to. When two non-conforming lots come into common ownership, case law provides the two will merge to eliminate or reduce zoning non-conformity. That this is amended for zoning purpose. Adjacent lots under common ownership, the time of recording or endorsement. That conform to the existing requirements, area footage. If it was fully con.
Conforming when it's created.
Fully conforming more than ten thousand square feet. And are located in a zoning district that allows for single families. I think you're gonna get. Pre-existing non-conforming at, under the new law.
And then you.
So I could just do a.
Then you just do the jigsaw puzzle around your house and then out the back end.
You, I. I think that there's.
To make your house conform.
We should, we should talk to Paula. Either that or take the master bedroom off.
Yeah, that seems like a. That seems like a.
Yeah.
An extreme.
Yeah. Uh, I think you draw a line around it.
I think there's a real likelihood that you're gonna be able to do this as two pre-existing non-conforming. If if the law is exactly what Amy just said.
Okay, that was not the section of that bulletin I would make a big read on because that's for something else we're doing, but I saw that in there.
Are you talking to her in the near future?
Where's all your midnight?
She's gonna be here tonight.
Should we hang around and wait?
Well, we're gonna be talking about ADUs.
We're talking about the ADUs and. Rentals.
ADUs.
Or would you rather not add that to your playlist?
About it. Um, I mean, it's come up on this particular agenda either for us. She won't be prepared for it.
Yeah, no. But she, but she's here to talk about this new.
The the. She's here to talk to you about the updates, which is the ADU and that's.
It's in it.
That's in there.
I think.
I don't have a problem.
I don't think there'd be any reason not to just.
Okay, we can get a quicker answer for you. We'd be happy to add a quicker answer.
Yeah.
It's so, it's interesting to note, probably not relevant. But there's five and a half acres in the lots on that street are less than two. Some even one, some even less.
Yeah.
So I have that huge lot. And not somehow leave it.
As you said, when they were all created, they all had this lower amount of frontage. It was probably a hundred and fifty feet at that. And I know we've had all different frontage requirements over the years, plenty of developments, they're. Read all that in.
I think where they're both exactly the same, they were probably, it was.
Yeah, I have, I have three acres and a hundred foot.
Yeah, just keeps on going.
Maybe you should do the little half.
I don't think it's gonna go by tax cycle.
I have only one. It's a road up your lot line.
Well, I already have a road up my lot.
I know, that's the driveway. But yeah, uh, so I think there's the possibility. Of that, allowing you to then draw your line off the existing where they are and just do an A and R land swap to get your structure combined.
Okay.
It could be as simple as if this is what it is, then that undoes. Everything as long as these lots were created this way to begin with.
Yeah, because as long as they're fully, it looks, they were fully conforming to begin with, they didn't merge.
And they were created.
So.
And if you've got, honestly, I mean, I would say they've got. Separate deeds on these properties regardless of what's the assessors department.
It's one deed, but it references two lots.
Two lots from the plan, right? Yeah, yeah, it's because you bought both lots.
Yeah, you might have to do a land swap on there.
Yeah, land swap on the A and R, move the stuff around. And if that's the rule for the lot. We will just hand that to the building department and go. Even simple.
I I mean, I'll be careful. I I would, I would love to see it um. That way.
That way versus this, yeah.
Yeah.
Should I think? Well, from our perspective, that that little piece there on. Some lot that was. Just a lot with three hundred feet of frontage. It started. And has five acre, would try to do this. You, in this case, have a property that went originally subdivided was two lots.
Correct.
And we can, we can see that, we can invest, we can get the history of that. I mean, somebody that just has. Three hundred and fifty feet of frontage and it's always been one lot. Two little cul-de-sacs and now we've got two lots going in there. I think that's what we're kind of. Prefer to avoid. I I understand what you're getting at here. It basically said, hey, this was always two lots. Can I just get back to two lots?
Right.
That's what you're trying to get at. So, um.
Maybe next time I come back with the two circles.
Yeah.
I'm curious as to whether it's okay or not too at the same time.
I think. I I wonder from that standpoint, i- if that would all of a sudden be construed as you're just trying to circumvent the two hundred feet. Frontage requirement to be had because people could start doing that all over the place. Like I said, you got three hundred feet of frontage. Well, now we have four. Now we have four hundred. That would come up a lot, so.
I think it's weird. That'd be very inventive.
It's inventive. And I get the, again, I get the premise here in that these were two lots. I have an easier. Thought process of. Trying to accommodate because they were two lots at home. If you, if back in the day, if somebody else just bought it and one person didn't buy both, there'd be two houses sitting there.
That's a lot easier for us and we'd much prefer to do it that way.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um. Our next item up. Uh. We can get to. You guys wanna hang out with us? If you are unofficial, unofficial reviewing. With official or unofficial?
Yeah.
Um. So our next item we have is the discussion of general codes review of subdivision rules and regulations. Now, this is coming as a part of. The. Review that general code did for us or is done for us on the. Zoning bylaw reclassification. They offered. Um, in the. Contracts that we had. Also review for us our subdivision rules and regulations. So we just, we put them up on it. Included within the monies and I think we had already. We had already provided. So, um. Beyond that, as we know, we've been without a. Permanent town planner now for a year. Um. We didn't do much with it. The working group. That I'm a part of is working on the zoning bylaw reclassification. Our group's meeting again. Um, later this week on that, because we we finally got it back back from them also. Um. So I don't know. What, if anything, we we should be doing with the rules and regulations until we have a town. Okay, I don't, I think if we play around with it and try to finish it off and do something with it, we're liable to mess it up, so.
So Emily. It was asking whether we we, she should put the nineteen editorial and legal questions on upcoming agenda.
We could do that. We could do that and we can review them and see what our opinions are on them and take them from there. But I really think short of us deciding that we're gonna turn this over to town council. To do the review for us, which is probably our only other option. I don't see us. Being the ones to do. We need to. We have a professional that are reviewing it general code, but we also need our own professionals.
Well, if we don't have a planner to do it, then then Amy's gonna.
Then Amy's, then Amy's gonna do it. Hi, Amy.
Hello, Amy. I have a couple of questions about the memo. So it's basically. Once we, um, the the. The reclassification, that that has to go to town meeting to be approved?
Yeah, the reclassification, once, once the our group is done with it, then it will come to the.
Planning board.
Planning board and then we'll have public hearings on it and do all of those pieces of it. Then it goes to town meeting. Rules and regulations, we decide them.
We decide, okay, that's what I.
But we want to make sure we do a good job, that's for sure.
But then she asked about the nineteen questions. So are they on the reclassification or on the subdivision?
No, they're on the subdivision rules and regulations. We had no short of seventy-five on the bylaws that that the bylaw group is dealing with.
Right.
Yeah, so that's just, just on this piece of it. Our rules and regulations, we can, we can. Have them say pretty much what we want them to say. So as far as, you know, how we're gonna handle those pieces of the puzzle, but I think we need to do it and looking at what's been. What we want may be changed. And where we should really be. And that. Really takes the involvement of the town, of town.
You went away to another town, right?
For me, yes, but if we have to move forward. With general code, general code's gonna have generally what we should be doing anyway. I think then at at a minimum, we have to have town council. It's not a small document.
Yes, the question is, what is the risk to the town if the. Zoning bylaw reclassification goes through, but the subdivision rules and regulations are not?
No, we just still operate under our current rules and regulations.
Yeah, but there's no chance of those things creeping apart and creating something untenable between.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, does it make sense for us to look at them as a group? Well, does it make sense for us to look at them as a group? See if we have some thoughts just here before we move forward.
As far as just within the, the rules and regulations.
Yeah, 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 just before we pass it on to Amy.
Well, I think we could do that at, at one of our next meetings. The question was, we, we'll look over these nineteen items and give our. Thoughts, impressions on that and then turn it back to general code. And then whenever they review, we can get onto town council if we don't have somebody else to review.
Yeah, I think they're worth that.
Really, okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll direct Amy to put that on to one of our next, uh, agendas.
Okay, you mean Emily?
Emily. Been a long weekend. It's only Monday.
Did you wanna ask Amy the question while, while?
Sure.
While these folks are.
Yeah, so we just had a question come up that, thank you for being here even early.
No problem.
Which is great. Yeah, um, so we have a property that was. Is currently made up of two parcels of land that when originally subdivided. Um, don't have two hundred feet of frontage now. But at the time they were created, they were under the rules of a hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And. It's been in common ownership. The deed represents both lots, goes back to the two separate lots that were on there. Our assessor's office calls it one big five acre lot now. Um, but in, I know we're looking at the ADU stuff, but in your update, there's the indication. That. The lots could convert back to being two separate lots.
The merger doesn't work.
The merger doesn't.
The merger doesn't.
Yeah, the lot was created under the rules of its time when it was created.
Yeah, well, it has seventy-five feet of frontage and ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got all on it.
So the only issue is that, that the, um, you know, the only issue is that it is limited to an eighteen hundred, eighteen fifty square foot house. That's the largest the house can be and the house must be through bedrooms.
On, on the next lot.
On the whatever lot you're claiming is ten thousand square feet and seventy-five feet of frontage. Over and it's not, and it has not, um, it's not developed.
No, it's not developed. So it has to be three bedroom and eighteen hundred fifty square feet.
Mm-hmm, that's the maximum, maximum it can be is eighteen hundred and fifty square feet and it has to contain three bedrooms.
It'll have to be a smaller house.
So, so the purpose of that is, you know, for starter homes.
Smaller is better.
Okay. I mean, I think that what's, what's, you say, how many acres is the lot?
Five and a half.
Five and a half, so it'll be two and a half acre lot with a house that size on it.
Well, but with a lot of land.
Lot of land in a nice area and a nice view.
Lot of conservation.
Buildable compared to not.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So, okay.
So if I, because of your question, we go to what you were talking about, was it A D R or something like that?
A D U.
A D U or you.
Oh, oh, yeah.
I'm referring to this structure here that has, as she was saying, no improvements on the property. So we've got this. This, uh. Partial.
Yeah, we have the intrusion of the current house across the line. Cut the house off a lot.
To fix that.
So that would be okay under what we're talking down.
The A and R stands for approval not required. And if you have existing lots that are, that are each independently. Buildable, you can carve them up the way you want, as long as you carve them up in a way that keeps them compliant.
But I just wanted to add that fact for you simply because there is an infringement, uh, over.
Should we bring it back up on?
So the lot is divided technically.
The way it works is what the house sticks over the lot line like a little.
Yeah.
So that addition is over the line.
Yeah, that would be developed.
So Amy, you can see there on the plan that the other idea is create that half circle to get frontage on the other lot.
Two hundred feet. They're originally both one fifty.
So by the red line.
Yeah, where's the cer- the circle is part of what lot? Wait, is this?
Proposed.
So the original lots were these two right here. Um, but then they ended up building the master bedroom over the lot line.
Yeah.
And so we're proposing to create two hundred feet of frontage here, up to there. Cut this piece off like that and then create our two hundred feet of frontage with it.
How are you creating two hundred feet of frontage by just adding a, adding a?
We're, we're proposing that to be the new lot line at the frontage.
Is that gonna be, that's gonna be a subdivision? Subdivision.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, I think that's how you're gonna have to do it. Because the new law, I know, the new law, the new law, it, it, it. You already, it's already developed because it has that structure on it.
What if we undeveloped it just out of curiosity?
I mean, you tore the addition off.
Yeah.
I don't know Freeman, it's a brand new law. I mean, I don't, I don't really know. I know. For example, if this was under the fifty-five thousand square foot isolated or separate lot protection. If it was built at any time, it could have a shed on it. You can't use it. You can't do it. So I, I wouldn't tear anything down right now.
Cause the other option, like we were just talking about.
Asked me.
Leave the regular property line where it is by this new rule and then just come in and carve out around the addition, back out the backside again.
Yeah.
Leaving, just doing a quick A and R to keep it performing.
And it's just a hypothetical.
But you can't do an A and R. You can't create, you can't create the new lot by A and R. It has to already be created.
It is already created. We're just swapping land between the two.
Yeah, but that's creating a new lot. You would be creating a new lot. Cause you'd have to, the only way you can swap the land is through an A and R. So you'd have to create, so they would, it would be a new lot.
Okay, and we wouldn't be swapping any frontage.
Because that bedroom extends onto what? Lot two.
Yeah.
Two, then the whole deed property.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm a little less. The half circle.
Sorry.
Because I'm afraid this could pop up all over.
I know, I know.
Somebody has three hundred feet of frontage and five acres. They could say, fine, I'll have two hundred feet of frontage and on the next hundred, I'm gonna put in a half circle. Now I've got pretty much four hundred.
I agree.
But I don't know that anything would preclude that.
I mean, I, I think you, I mean, if you have to.
It's a subdivision of land under three.
And are you look, how many ver- how many waivers are you looking at? Probably not a lot, right?
Well. Not putting in an eight inch drain.
The length of the roadway would be minimum, yeah.
Coming driveway coming in over that.
Right.
Cul-de-sac that's not gonna be created.
Right.
Yeah. But that would open up a lot of properties to say they wanna do the same thing.
Yes.
But if, I mean, if it's legal, it's legal.
Yeah.
Sorry to bring you in on something that spurred the moment that you weren't expecting.
That's okay.
It wasn't your write-up.
So I wouldn't be, I, I mean, like, it's brand new, but I don't, I.
I was hoping for an easier way.
It is developed and the only way that you're gonna, the only way you're gonna create a separate lot is to A and R it because, or to get rid of the addition or separate lot or A and R it. And, and that means it's a new lot. So it's not a lot in existence anymore.
Okay.
But if you said it was, so did the, the law say that any of these that were combined. Automatically revert back?
I mean. Yeah, the merger doesn't apply.
The merger doesn't apply.
Yeah.
So this was, let's just say that his addition didn't go over the lot.
Right, then he'd be fine.
Then he'd be fine. But let's say that the addition didn't go over the lot line, but it's on the lot line. It's not fifteen feet from the.
No, that's fine. That's fine. It's not on the.
I was just trying to think of some way that we would want to, so these, so. Two lots in this situation can never A and R back and forth between each other.
They can A and R back and forth, but they can't be sub- they can't, they can't be subject to this new provision, I don't think, because.
Okay.
They'd be, you're creating a new lot. As soon as you create a new lot, it's no longer a part of this provision.
Okay.
The provision's only for lots that exist.
So there was, so how, how retroactive is this? Because before they put up. The, the, the bedroom, I guess, that extends over the lot line. You would, it looks like you would have had two pre-existing non-conforming lots.
Correct.
Cause that's where the subdivision was created to begin with.
Correct.
And the fact that they put up a bedroom then concludes this?
Yeah, because they.
They've utilized part of the law.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what, that would be my initial reaction.
So had, had the addition never gone on and yes, the family in the past bought both lots because they didn't want somebody to build next to them.
Right.
That other lot would still be good.
Provided they didn't put a garage or anything.
They didn't put anything on it, okay.
But we wouldn't be limited to three bedrooms or eighteen hundred square feet because their grandfather locked.
That would be a grandfather locked.
Well, no, because they would've, they would merge. They, cause they're under, they're undersized, the frontage is under, the frontage is not two hundred. It's only a hundred and fifty, right?
Because of the common ownership.
Common ownership makes them one puzzle.
Yeah, and so they merge and they merge here because you have, you, you've constructed on both of them.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Amy, is the eighteen fifty cap and three bedroom a covenant that would then have to run with the land?
I think so because it's in, it's in the legislation. Yeah, so I would require it.
Yeah.
Um, we have discussed how, how does the building department handle that? I mean. Talk about a mess because what happens in thirty years when somebody comes in, they wanna add to their eighteen fifty square foot house? How do you?
Yeah, are you telling, no, you're not.
Yeah, you gotta go through all the records. So yeah, that's what we would probably advise.
So, so in order to not get the merger, uh, under the new law. You can, you might get, you, you might get the second lot, but you can only go to eighteen fifty and three bed.
Exactly, minimum three bedrooms.
Minimum.
But also, if you think about.
Small houses with a lot of bedrooms is what they're required.
It's fifty foot of frontage requirement. So you could have.
Seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five, you could have a pretty small piece of land attached to your property that all of a sudden, if you haven't put anything on it yet. Is buildable.
Could they divide that?
If it was pre-existing non-conforming. When it was, when the lot was created.
Well, a lot, a lot of these really crazy little lots were created before that we had any frontage. All sorts of crazy small lots out there.
Yeah, we're gonna run into some issues.
We're definitely gonna see it.
Well, could they take that second lot and it's one, with the, with the circle and actually divide that into two? No, no, it's, the lots have to be in existence. Okay, got it. So again, they'd be creating a new lot.
So if you have a pre-existing lot with only, that was attached to your lot that only has fifty feet of frontage, you can't do anywhere. It doesn't have seventy-five. Interesting, very interesting. Okay, so that's kinda back to where you are.
So we'll finalize the drawings and come see you again.
Yep.
Talk to Paula.
Do you have any more hours? Do we? I don't know.
I can all look into the whole thing about construction. I mean.
Okay.
We don't have much to go on.
I don't know the answer to the questions. It's probably never good to answer, ask a question.
You can ask a question that don't know the answer to as long as you don't care what the answer.
As hope. If, if we take the drawing that Freeman's made and make it a non-buildable lot. Just have it as a residue for potentially future use. Is that a possibility? Maintain some legacy and duck spray for.
I, I, I'm questioning why you'd want to do that because if. As soon as you create another lot, you have more tasks.
Leave it the way it is.
Just leave it the way it is. That excess land should only be getting assessed at excess land.
The reading, the rationale for that is that, um, the neighbor to write. Uh, is probably going to sell their property at some point. They have not put much in the way of improvements into that house. And they had been talking, they've been discussing selling that property. If they sold that property and they acquired this vacant lot. And potentially instead of having one house on their lot, they could have two. If they combined, merged those two lots.
Cause he has frontage on two roads.
Oh, he's got enough buzzing over there that if he owned this acreage.
Yes.
He could get two houses in.
Correct.
He can give up some of his frontage on the side street here. He's got the frontage elsewhere.
But, but you can, you can, you can A and R that plan. The, the, to get the one lot. Conforming.
Yeah.
Anytime you want.
Yeah, and leave the, leave the additional parcel as open for whoever buys his property next door to buy.
I knew that question. I would not answer. I wouldn't understand. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand what you were saying. Sorry.
Okay, did you say, so if you did this, the A and R that you're talking about here, the red line, just getting, getting your bedroom all conforming and everything else on there.
Getting it conforming.
Yeah, you have two hundred feet of frontage. And then conforming the rest of that.
Well, we've only got three hundred and twenty total on that road, so it was a hundred and sixty initially or a hundred and fifty, like three instead of.
Yeah.
So we would not have two hundred feet.
You would have two hundred if you added. I thought when you've extended that lot line all the way to the new circle.
You're creating two hundred.
That's two hundred, yeah. You could just, that's the A and R I'm talking about.
Correct. You can still do that.
I, I don't see any reason why you can't do that. And then, then you have a separate lot. Two separate lots and one little, and, and the one on the left is fully conforming.
And the one on the right is not buildable. But if we have the circle, then it's buildable, right? That's the whole idea. So we should do that and not, we can get what some people. If Amy finds that, uh, it's not allowable, then we'll create a taken.
No, I don't know about that circle, that half circle. I agree with the chairman. That's a.
Something different.
This creative freedom.
So it does sound like the, potentially what you're talking about, the neighbor. There, there are a couple of ways to slice and dice the thing, the whole thing up. Yeah, you might have to work with the neighbor to get more frontage. She gets your two hundred feet.
It's probably not gonna happen. All right, different political perspectives.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Bring it back past us and we will have the town planner and council take a look for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Could we, um. Skip to item six so that Amy will get out of here as soon as. You've been in meetings all night, I bet you so. We'll move like past N B T A communities on some discussion. Uh, with Amy, council, ADU and short-term rental regulations. So.
So, uh, thank you for having me again, Amy Questle, uh, from the town council's office. So, um. As you know, on, uh, August sixth, the governor signs the Affordable Homes Act and section seven and eight of the Affordable Homes Act. Uh, refer to accessory dwelling units, which are ADUs. Section seven is, um, pretty straightforward. It amends the definition of ADUs, which allows for. Uh, the ADU, the size of the ADU would be either, um. It's half of the primary structure or nine hundred feet, whichever is smaller. So the maximum size for an ADU is nine hundred feet. Um, and, um, section eight then gets into some more regulations regarding the ADUs. And requirements of the ADUs, um, although section seven does also specifically state that. The, um, town may not unreasonably regulate ADUs, but, um, section eight. Um, kicks in in a hundred and eighty days, which is, um, February second of twenty twenty-five. And that provides that ADUs have to be allowed as of right in any district, any single-family zoning district. Which is not defined, but we interpret that as any zoning district that allows a single-family use. So, um, anywhere you allow a single family, you have to allow an ADU as of right.
Everywhere.
Every, right. In, in, in that's very, it would be everywhere. Yes, so, um, and that again is subject to reasonable rules and regulations. Um, and also, um, you can only, uh, require one parking spot. Unless the ADU is within a half a mile of a train station and then you cannot require any parking spots. Um, and the ADU is subject to, uh, other regulatory restrictions or regulations. Such as title five, it can be subject to site plan review under your.
Can you, can, how do we get site plan review?
So it specifically states in the legislation that it can be subject to site plan review. So what you would have to do, so.
Put it in the bylaw.
Yeah, you would have to put it in your bylaw. So your, um. Your current, you know, your current zoning bylaw allows accessory apartments, um, by special permit. And so you would have to amend that in any event. And so you would have to amend your zoning bylaw to allow for, um. You know, for a buy right with certain regulations. So we are stuck in, um. A predicament as usual with regard to the legislation. The legislators have this great idea, but then they don't think it through. As to how it's going to impact cities and towns. So what we have is a fall town meeting. Where, um, you know, you're welcome to amend your bylaw at the fall town meeting. However, the last sentence of section eight states that the, um, H L C, the, um, E O H L C. Which used to be D H C D, there's. Which used to be DHCD, there's the executive office of housing and living housing and livable communities. And uh it says that EOHLC may propagate rules and regulations or issue guidelines. They're not gonna issue regulate, they're not gonna propagate rules and regulations, but they could issue guidelines, which I suspect they will. Um if their guidelines are anything like their MBTA zoning guidelines, we are, we have a lot to look forward to, so um. So, they won't have those done by your fall town meeting. So your fall town meeting is gonna come and go, and then February second is gonna happen and you're not gonna be at your spring town meeting. You are actually one of the most, in the most beneficial positions, because I I think Duxbury might be the earliest. Town meeting in the Commonwealth, because you usually have, I think, the first Saturday of March. And so you would have a very small time period, you know, where you might have. You know, you might, you might have.
Completely unregulated.
Completely unregulated, but they wouldn't be because. You would have to do your section five public hearing, your forty A section five public hearing. Which um would require, say, say it requires site plan. So somebody would have to have their building permit for their ADU prior to the first publication of your forty A section five public hearing. So I actually think that you guys are are in an are in a much better position than others.
Do that again for me, the the section, the forty A section five public hearings are public hearing in order to amend the bylaw.
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
And so under.
Once we announce that, we're blocked in.
Yes, under, once you've done your first publication.
I I I got it.
And that has to be published twice in the newspaper, um you know, every once every two weeks or once every week for two weeks.
We do that.
So we go, so it looks like.
You can do it now, because you you have six months to get it done.
Right.
I don't.
And so it looks like we. Can kick this can until the regular town meeting without any real risk, as long as we make a publication about.
I think so.
A bylaw.
That we're gonna, we're gonna have to change our bylaw.
Yeah.
To meet this requirement in a couple of ways, and then also.
You have to adopt their their definition.
Their definition.
Under section seven.
Yeah.
Um and then you would have to, so for example, if you wanted to um require a site plan review.
Yeah.
Then you have to.
Put that in.
Have to put that in your zoning bylaw.
So the the laws I looked at it said, we can't also prohibit rentals.
You cannot prohibit it from being rented.
Right.
But you can prohibit short-term rentals.
That's the question that I have been just. We don't have a short-term rental bylaw, you know that.
Yes.
I'm gonna talk about this a million times. Um and. I really believe we need one.
Mm-hmm.
Um and in part because. It says we could prohibit short-term rentals, but that we, if we don't prohibit short-term rentals. It's, the law says you can rent, so.
But my reading of that was that the law prohibits short-term rentals.
No.
Doesn't this this product says no short-term rental?
No, sixty four G. Right, no, no, it says, no, it uh it's it says that you um you may prohibit short-term rentals, so um.
And currently on bylaws prohibit short-term rentals.
No, they don't.
They don't, well, they do in the fact that it's not an allowed use.
It's not allowed use.
Yeah.
Right, but the.
That's the problem with our bylaw, a lot of it is not. We don't spell out the prohibitions all the time, it's like, if it's not in there, you can't do it.
So so my concern was this, if is that the the new law says that you can't, you can't say no to rentals, right?
These are obviously gonna be rented.
Right, the there's a prohibit, there the the law also said that you can however prohibit. Short-term rentals.
Mm-hmm.
My. Interpretation of that is that rentals are permitted permitted in as long as. And unless you then do something about short-term rentals, you can rent for whatever period you want.
Okay.
So what you could do, um what I um have thought about what you could do is. You can um in your zoning bylaw, you can specifically prohibit that ADUs be. Um used as a short-term rental as defined in section one of six of sixty four G.
Okay.
And that's thirty days or less.
Yeah.
Okay.
Without.
Can't we just prohibit that townwide for all rentals?
Um.
So then we have no short-term rental allowed.
That would, you would have to amend your zoning bylaw.
Cause that's the belief everyone is under in town, because we don't spell out that you can do short-term rentals. Again, the bylaw is, if you don't say it, you can't do it.
Well, it's a prohibitive bylaw, right, so. The. What if we wanted to have a reasonable short-term rental bylaw that doesn't prohibit. Short-term rentals, but in fact provides reasonable regulations so that people can do some short-term rentals. We can derive income from short-term rentals, we have some sort of enforcement mechanism on short-term rentals, is I'm not. I I. I'm not sure that prohibition, direct prohibition from my perspective, is the right approach on this. And I know we've worked on this in other communities.
Yes. Yes, so um I have communities that embrace short-term rentals and they make a lot of money.
Yeah, on Nantucket.
Yeah.
Ton of money on short-term rentals and sticking up three thousand ADUs on all of their properties, they make nothing but money.
Um.
But that's not really here.
Province town also um allows short-term rentals and heavily restricts them.
Right.
Yeah.
They um they actually um. You know, based on the money that came in from short-term rentals, we're able to um, you know, create a position for somebody to be able to inspect and and things like that, but. Obviously, we're talking.
Heavy tourism.
A holder.
Areas, I will tell.
Yes, so um yes, the short-term rental bylaws that um that allow for short-term rentals are mostly on the Cape.
Okay, which is where they have lots of short-term rentals to begin with.
Well, you know, you are a coastal town and you know, you have to think about if you are going to pro one hundred percent prohibit short-term rentals. That means you're going to stop all the weekly rentals at the beach.
Well, I mean, I I see that from the standpoint of. That's town meeting's decision to make.
Mm-hmm, right.
The town needs, because we get clamoring, a little, we get a little clamoring on one side and. There was some very loud clamoring on the other side that said they didn't want eight.
Mm-hmm.
Well, but the loud clamoring on that other side was very specific to a particular.
Particular situation, but then I was approached by a number of people afterwards that said, we shouldn't be doing this anywhere. So there are some people that feel that way.
We can actually decide, we can have an overlay district and say we only watch it in certain areas, like at the beach or something like that.
Yeah, you that you could do. Yeah.
You could do it, but then you get where you draw the line and you go to the next one, the next guy says, well, I want it too, why can't I, then why can't I, then why can't I do it on Washington Street, then why can't I do it over here? If you do it on Washington Street, why can't my side of town? You know, then.
I I wouldn't, I I I personally think that that. Short-term rentals exist in this town already.
Oh, yeah, we know.
Right.
We know.
Um let's, I'd like to be able to come up with a rational way to address them and to regulate them.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than, even if you do, even if you flat out ban them. We don't have a reasonable enforcement mechanism.
They're still gonna happen.
To to stop them.
Yeah.
And they're gonna get more of.
Because we've seen it over, we've seen it multiple times.
Yeah, so, yeah.
You're gonna get more with the ADUs.
Right.
Because people will just say, well, yeah, I can't do it for short-term rental, but who's gonna know that I rented it for two of you?
But we don't even have an enforcement mechanism, because even if you take the person to court, the judge, the district court judge.
That's true.
Don't have enough evidence, it it's all hearsay and and it's it, we've done this.
Okay, but say we put short-term rental in and we regulate, say you can rent up to four weeks a year, what?
Right.
Putting whatever requirements, who's gonna stop them from going eight to ten?
Well, the, but but you. Well, but what you said was Province Town then had.
They raised enough money.
They raised enough money to think they could pay somebody to rent it.
Yeah, so we also have um, we also have. Numerous um short-term rental bylaws coming up at um for Nantucket. And um one of them is um to only allow for rentals for a certain amount of time.
Right.
And so, you know, that is um, there really hasn't been a lot of talk about how to enforce that. Um because Nantucket is much more self-enforcing, um so you you would be looking at a lot of self-enfor, meaning your neighbors are gonna rat you out.
Neighbors are gonna rat you out.
Well, but the problem is even if your neighbors rat you out here, which we've had.
Yes.
And then it goes before the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
And then there's an order that says you gotta stop. And then if you violate the order, the town has to take you to court.
Right.
And then the, and then you have the whole evidentiary issue that you and I have already run into.
Correct, I agree.
Alright.
I agree. So, one thing to remember with ADUs is that um they are relatively small, they're a maximum of nine hundred square feet. A lot of um, so the ADUs do not um, do not stop you from having to comply with title five.
Right.
So for example, if you have a four-bedroom house and you have a four-bedroom septic system. For you to put up an ADU, you have to increase your septic system to a five-bedroom system, which means you have to go to the board of health. You have to get engineered plans, you have to upgrade your septic system. That includes adding on to your house, if you just wanna add on to your house with an ADU, you're still adding a bedroom. So um you know, other things.
It's not cheap to just build.
It it's really not, and 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 I think that there's a lot of um, you know, a lot of fear of. An ADU on every lot and that that really will, you know, will not necessarily happen, wetlands are still, you know, in in play.
My guess is if you you wanna put this on as an addition and do it and deal with your septic system. Or do it as a separate structure and deal with your septic system, you're talking two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars at a minimum to put this thing up.
Well, you are.
How much are you gonna get in rent?
Probably, and and that goes to the, that goes to my whole argument about short-term rentals is that. It's unlikely that anybody would want a short-term rental, if if say it's an attached ADU, do you really want strangers coming into your house every two weeks?
No.
I wouldn't, but others, I mean, it's been done, it's been done in town.
People on Nantucket, they rent out bedrooms in their house.
Right, no, it's it's definitely been done, but it's um, I I'm not sure it's gonna be as prevalent as as everyone.
What it's gonna open up is the existing structures.
Um.
The addition, the existing detached structures.
Well, detached structures, correct.
There's living space to now shove the whole kitchen in there and make it a rental. Which we weren't allowing, or we never allowed.
Yeah.
Never allowed that to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Now, they still gotta stay under nine hundred square, but a lot of them are gonna be able to meet that requirement too.
Right, but how many, what can they put in for nine hundred square feet, really, realistically? I mean, for one week. I don't even know, I mean, nine hundred square feet is.
Right, I think I lived in six hundred square feet for a couple of years when I started out.
I did too.
Nine hundred square feet.
You can live in that.
Would it would be completely livable, isn't it?
For, but not for, say, six people.
Oh, no.
Right, but this is what short-term rentals are all all about. These big houses at the beach where you can entertain and they're not about nine hundred square foot above somebody's garage, really. Technically, I mean, if you really think about it.
True.
Um the other thing is that you have to think about is how much money are you going to make on a short-term rental in the summer and and don't get me wrong, I think you can make a lot of money in Duxbury. But is that gonna carry you throughout the rest of the year, because then. You know, what are you gonna do, are you gonna have, you're gonna have to come up with a winter rental throughout the winter and then throw those people out, do summer rentals? So it's not as easy as just saying that they're all gonna be short-term rentals, I think.
Some people will pay a lot of money.
Yes.
For almost any.
Right.
I mean. But when people offer on what I have, which is not maleable.
But would that, that would, but wouldn't that be more on on the Cape and the islands?
Oh, yeah.
Than here, so you know, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not trying to downplay it, because it will be, there is, this legislation is going to be a huge effect to all communities, um.
So your idea is that the ADUs as established aren't really gonna be as suitable for short-term.
Right.
Rentals.
Yes.
Short of somebody's coming in town for a wedding and they need a place to stay, so they stay with you for a week.
Yes. Exactly. Yes.
So they're not gonna be party houses.
Right.
They're gonna be.
But do you agree with me that if we don't do something, even if it's just prohibit the short-term rental in the new bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
That we run the real risk under the new law that short-term rentals are permissible?
Well, not that they're permitted, but they're gonna be treated like other places in Duxbury and it's gonna happen.
And it's.
Yes.
We're we're allowing it by being permissible.
Yes.
At this point, so.
Yes, I agree.
So the, I think, I think part of the question on on this is potentially have. A bylaw, bylaw option for town meeting, we prohibit, we don't allow, the people that are doing it now, gotta knock it off, it's right there in the bylaw, we're doing it.
Well, that if they're doing it with ADUs, because it's going to specifically prohibit it for ADUs.
They wanna get into short-term rental overall.
I'm gonna do it overall.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's that would be a difference.
But if we, we prohibited it in the town, overall, that includes the ADUs, I mean, we can spell it out in there, ADUs included, but.
If you wanna prohibit short-term rentals in the entire town, you have to take into consideration, there will be no more weekly rentals in the summer in Duxbury.
Mm-hmm. But.
No, we are already prohibited.
Not, yeah.
But we have to put it in light and the town didn't vote on it.
But, yeah, it was, but I mean, yeah.
We prohibit it, but the town didn't vote on it yet, like I'm saying is you bring that to town meeting, town meeting decides, I'm I'm not against town meeting making the decision.
Right. I mean, if you, if you really think about it, except for FEMA. Changes to FEMA which were required to be amended, the zoning bylaw was required to be amended. I don't think your zoning bylaw has been amended since two thousand fifteen when we took over as town council. I don't think there's been any zoning bylaws that have gone to town meeting floor, except for the FEMA ones.
Yeah, we had, we had a couple we changed, a few things, but they're they're pretty minor, all the big stuff, we got, oh, I'm so confused.
Exactly, exactly, so.
Yeah.
So, really, we're going back at least ten years of, you know, this prohibitive bylaw and it doesn't say that it's allowed, so it's prohibited.
So, what is your feeling on if we 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 brought an option to town meeting that says it's prohibited everywhere, including ADUs? And then we, I mean, I'm not against having two things that are being proposed and the town can decide which one they wanna do. I don't, we don't do that, we haven't done that in the past, we kind of come forward with what we want and that's it. But I think in this case, we need the town to decide, and I think, say, one version is it's completely prohibited, then you know where the town meeting stands.
Mm-hmm.
And if they say, yeah, that's what we want, well, then there's no point talking about it.
So why don't I provide you with two.
And then a bylaw that's pretty darn restrictive.
Right.
Cause we're we're certainly not gonna want something that's wide open.
Right.
We're not gonna be the Cape, we're not gonna be Nantucket, we're not gonna be wide open, but something that's pretty damn restrictive, to the point where it's.
Well, what's the, what's being presented in Nantucket is definitely not wide open.
Okay.
So.
If if neighbors are complaining about what's going on at that house, well, it's gotta be shut down and no longer allowed to rent, right? Just, you know, there has to be, I heard one of the bylaws has some provision like that. Yeah. I mean, I know that's difficult, but we can't have the neighbors dealing. With somebody who will rent to anybody and causes problems for the neighborhood all summer long, most of the people that are here primarily wanna enjoy the summer here.
Right.
Duxbury's great to live in year round, yes, but the summer is it, that's that's the best time, so.
The White's point, though, I do think, I mean, it would, I think it would be helpful to figure out some type of a mechanism to regulate any of this. Especially.
I think that would have to be built into if we're if we're.
Short-term, yes.
Doing a bylaw that does allow the short-term, there has to be, there are mechanisms that we can get fees for it, right?
Yes, you could, that's through the state that you can get fees through the state, but the regulation.
And if we can build up and upstairs to hide, have somebody either part of their job or an assistant does it and somebody regulate the thing. We have a lot of trouble in town having things like that done.
What's been very successful is that um a bylaw that allows for short-term rentals. And then um provides that the board of health regulate the short-term rentals through their own, through their regulations.
Yeah.
Um and it's kind of a crossover between board of health and the building department meeting, everything has to be up to code, um you know, in you know, ingress, ingress, things like that.
Lord's law.
Um, yes.
He can find a job for you.
I mean, I read the uh Province Temple by law, and one of the main fixtures of that is transition fees. So that when a. Renter moves out and another moves in and pays a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's a fee of that cost, yeah.
Uh and given the volume of rentals that we have now and we're likely to have. I'm sure the four percent isn't gonna cover.
Yeah.
The effort required to enforce, so we would have to have some pretty high transition.
We're gonna make a couple thousand bucks.
For this to be viable at all, because otherwise we're just digging a hole.
Unless there's more out there that we don't know about, or more people take advantage of it if we do make it allowable.
Yeah.
We'll let fee or we'll come in fees. I mean, the rental is. At two, three thousand dollars for the week.
Right.
We're gonna charge a thousand on our, I mean.
But if if you have, if we have fifty of those or on, you know, for seventy five in the summer, that that does add up.
Yeah, but if we if we're a hundred or two hundred bucks, we're seventy five hundred fifteen thousand bucks. And that's including all each of those things turning over, they don't turn over, I don't, I don't think anybody's got their house booked out twelve weeks in a row, probably. You know, anyone.
I don't think you can say anybody, but.
Well, maybe so.
Yeah.
I shouldn't use that generality, but, um. And then people are, I mean.
I know, I I mean, I've.
You didn't watch or a rental.
House behind me is, it's weekly for ten weeks.
What's that?
The house behind me is weekly for ten weeks, yep, straight.
Somebody new every week.
Every Saturday, yeah.
How does such one handle it?
Yeah, it is such one, I don't, I don't know. We don't represent.
You don't pay attention to the bylaw in the background.
They're never a problem, they're, you know, we we don't have a problem with that at all, but but it is, they are, yeah, they are different, so, um.
So, if we can maybe take a look at something that would be restrictive.
I'll put together two or three and then, um. Back to the ADUs, um, this, you know, so. So, one of the things that we have to, well, why don't I suggest this? Why don't, I'll, I'm gonna take a look, um. Cuz I've already, um, I've already looked at your, the zoning bylaw that you have. And I will try and incorporate as many of these. This framework that you have right now. Obviously, there's some that I can't incorporate, such as one of them is a minimum lot size of twenty thousand square feet, and so that wouldn't have, I couldn't, we couldn't put that in, that wouldn't be reasonable. But some of them are very reasonable, so we can, um, for example, you guys have at least one parking spot anyway.
Yep.
So, I'll keep as many, as much as I can and I'll provide you with a, um. With a draft that does require site plan review, because what I've got, everybody's in agreement, that site plan review be required. Now, that does mean that as the planning board, you will have more work to do, so, I just.
Let's take them off.
And the other thing that you can think about, because, um, right, I did, I did meet with another community about this and someone brought up the fact, so. What are we actually looking at for site plan review with an ADU? So, if it's a detached structure. You know, I understand you could be looking at possibly screening, you know, from the neighbor or maybe where the parking is gonna be. If it's an attached, you you don't look at, you don't do site plan for an addition to a building, you know, for a, an addition to a single family house.
Put up a secondary structure on their property now, we're not getting with it either.
Think about rules and reg, you know, site plan rules and regulations and your site plan rules and regulations for ADUs would be a lot less. Involved, you know, cuz you're not looking at dumpsters, you're not looking, you know, you're, you're not looking at, you know, where the trash pickup is gonna be, you know. Really, you're just looking at possibly some screening to the neighbors and.
So, at that point, it just refers back to the, to the building inspector to.
Yeah.
Check that stuff.
Yeah, so.
It probably would be, and I know things like, oh, how do we, how do we get our hands on it and do something with it, but at the same time, we're not gonna be able to do anything with it anymore.
Right.
Well, they did site plan review, you can always reasonably condition, you can't prohibit it, but, uh, but. Even if what that meant was we then now have a complete handle as the planning board on how many ADUs are going in.
We can get that handled from the building department too. The building, you gotta go through building permit for it, no matter what.
Yeah.
Right, but. But the building department can't say, you gotta put trees between your house and your neighbor's house.
Right.
They they can't say the parking's gotta be on the other side of the, of the structure.
No, they, they can't say that, but they also can't say that when you put up a secondary structure of your own, anywhere you want.
Right, but this is a special thing.
Okay, it doesn't sound like it's as special as it used to be.
One, one of the, one of the things that you can do with site plan, you know, a- as as Wayne said is. You have the ability to look at the plan in front of you and say, this is gonna look a lot better if you put your parking here. And the building department can't do that.
Yeah.
So, you know, there are benefits to it, but and and you don't have to do rules and regulations right away, you can wait and do rules and regulations later. Once you start seeing these and saying, we're we're waiting so much of our regular site plan review. We might as well do our, you know, do a, do a separate site plan review just for ADUs and it can just be.
Can have a one sheet ADU site plan review.
Yeah, so Amy, what is, what's, what's the reasoning behind the, the parking, parking space restriction?
So, it it, I, I think it's just a way to, um, prohibit towns from prohibiting. ADUs by requiring too much parking.
They can't acquire more than one space, doesn't mean you can't give them more than one.
Yeah, they could have more than one, if they have enough area. Um, one of the things that I think.
Anybody, there's no, nobody, no place in town that's within a half mile of transportation. So.
I don't think so.
No, so with that, that provision, when when.
Right, right, yeah. Um, and so, um. One of the other things that is go, most likely. Most likely will have to change in the zoning bylaw, um, but this is almost, it's, we've been kicking this around at my firm. It's almost impossible to tell is lot coverage, so. If your existing lot coverage is is low, is that unreasonably regulating ADUs? Because an ADU is obviously going to increase your lot coverage, so. That's a big question, is will multiple cities and towns have to change their lot coverage to allow for an ADU? Or do you do something more creative, saying lot coverage, you know, is fifteen percent with an ADU? It can be eighteen percent, but only ADUs, so that means you can't, lot coverage isn't increased for any structure, it's only increased for ADUs.
Let's count it really complicated three percent.
Oh, okay, no. No, I am, at the last meeting I was at, I couldn't even calculate half of eighteen hundred square feet, so I, that three percent kills me. I I do not do math and it kills me, it's, yeah, so.
So, so, so as it stands now, the ADUs are set up the way they're set up. But it is subject to, like, can't be fifty, inside of fifteen feet from us, setback and.
And again.
The rest of our rules apply.
Without any guidance from HLC, that seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, we don't let anybody put structures inside of, you could just shed inside of fifteen feet, why would you put this in?
Right, so that to me seems reasonable.
Yeah.
I don't know what HLC is gonna come up with, they could come up with something that says.
And right now, I think we would stick to our law.
Yeah, but they could come up with something that says that setbacks for an ADU cannot be more than half of what. The setbacks are for a primary structure, something like that. I don't know what they're gonna come up with, we have no idea.
And you can. Correct, but I didn't see anything that changed this. You could build an ADU, you could declare an ADU. Do whatever you want, especially if you had, if it was some provision where you got extra lot coverage for, doesn't mean you have to rent the thing out ever.
Oh, no. No, you don't, that'd be for family, you can't restrict.
I know somebody that's got a house now in a place where point one seven of an acre lots. But if you can put, you can put up to two ADUs and they let you cover almost the entire lot, and what everybody does is build the whole thing and not rent them out, they just get a bigger house.
Oh.
That has.
More kitchen.
The ADU over the garage, which they use when guests come, and then there's another ADU in the basement, which they just use people live in, the family.
So, that is the other thing is that, um, if you want, um, so allowing, you have to have a special permit requirement to allow for more than one ADU.
Okay.
So, I would also incorporate that, incorporate that into the draft.
Permit process for more than one ADU, you can't just restrict to one.
It doesn't sound like it, but it's very vague.
What if somebody had an ADU that was more than nine hundred square feet, that'd be special permit?
Um, so, again, excellent question. Uh, we don't think so, because the definition of ADU under section seven says nine hundred.
Okay.
But that has come up.
Okay. I just think of a pre-existing construction person, so I'd like to make this into an ADU, and, oh, it's thousand square feet.
Yeah, um, so the other thing, um, just real quick is that I am, um, I am, um. Participating in a webinar tomorrow with, um, uh, Judy Barrett and, um, EO HLC. Um, on AD, on this, on ADUs and, um, so far we, well, we have over six hundred people registered. And we have already, um, probably over two hundred questions, so. Um, I will find, you know, I'll have more information as time goes on.
Okay.
And like, like everything, Judy is an unbelievable.
Yes, although she wrote came to this, but, um. Can't say no to her, um, yeah, you just can't, so, but yes, she is, so we will be fortunate.
You will still have a forum if I.
Yes, that's correct, I know you're, good luck for your meeting.
Alright, so bye. Thanks, Wayne.
Yeah.
Are you?
I'm sure you're sitting down, they can't see your legs under the table with the shorts on.
What channel is it?
It's Court TV, I'm, 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 I'm capable, it's, I'll probably go on about nine fifteen.
Excellent.
I'm gonna watch, I'm a freeway.
Yeah.
Um, so do you guys need me for anything else?
Thank you very much, thanks for coming in such a late night, I appreciate it.
No big deal, so, um, so I'll get you the bylaws, when do you two wanna talk about this again, just so I have some kind of time limit in my head here? When? When do you meet next?
We meet on September ninth?
That's too soon.
That's, yeah, that's, that's just the next.
That's like, that's like right out in Labor Day.
We meet again then in twenty third?
Let's try for the end of, that's good, the twenty third, we'll try for the end of the month.
Okay.
Where are you on a, a planner? You, so.
Uh, interviewing Thursday afternoon for another internist.
Oh.
So, no planner, we have not had a single interview for an actual.
You're not alone, you're not alone, it's, it's, the Commonwealth is all over, it's planners, I don't know what happens, so.
I was, I'm gonna be having another discussion with them, we saved this much on the planner this year, I know it all goes back into free cash. I understand that, but that much was saved in the budget, that would allow us to increase the salary by twenty thousand dollars a year for five years, let's do it. You know?
It's tough, it's tough. Yeah.
That would help.
I mean, I only think, you see anybody else get in, anybody, I mean.
No.
I think the only way you're gonna do is with money.
Yeah, yeah, one, one town, yeah, hired some, no experience at all, so.
We can't do that here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not with, not with our citizenry, it won't go well.
And, you know, it's, it's just, yeah, so it's been tough, it's been very, very tough, so.
Yeah, okay, alright, well, thank you very much.
Alright, have a good night, thank you.
Alright, hang, we made you hang on to the end.
Yeah, I noticed that way, no, I've seen.
Is the, uh, has your medications lasted? Which one, the?
The update on the MBTA. It has got titles in it, so.
We can live with that.
Yeah, I wanted to just give you guys a little bit more specifics than I did last time, and, um, you know, I think as a liaison, I feel like, uh, I would be. I can do my job better if I bring you specific questions or concerns and get you guys to answer it and bring that back to the working group, I don't really have any specifics. So, I can only say this is where we are, it's disgusting, if you have any input or insight into that.
I think we worked through some of that with the select board and everybody wants to speak.
Yeah, it was useful to do the exercise with the mapping.
Yep.
Do we expand a little? No, no, we go back, we go the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's what we've done, I mean, we'll put that up there, but, basically, you know, the ten percent buffer is in debate.
Yeah.
We heard that the one town had like ten units, they just said ten.
They had a very small.
Total, no percentage, you know, buffer at ten units, uh, we're not pushing it that far.
Okay, so select for like five?
We asked for five percent, we gave it five percent, so that puts the potential total build out at seventy eighty-eight.
Okay.
Due to the bylaw, and the result is that the map shrinks. We got rid of the parcels going up the Tremont Street, yeah, we got rid of the bog behind Island Creek Apartments.
Okay.
And Bongies stayed the same.
Bongies stayed the same, okay, was there any benefit to leaving the bog in?
Well, that was done just to have the acreage.
Yeah, that's what.
That got an impact to density calculation, so it was kind of a trade off.
Okay, so it's a trade off, okay.
Their initial concept included it just to see where it landed, but now.
What did they do with the, the mandatory mixed use on the Bongies? Did that end up being? Part of the moving forward plan?
Oh, yeah, it's up here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, I could read this to you, if you haven't read it.
This is my site now as well as. Both of the, both of the locations have some mandatory business use.
Yes, Island Creek Park has an existing mixed use in the front, so we're just acknowledging.
Yeah.
And Bongies is, uh, neighborhood business.
Yeah.
So, it was kind of just.
On the point seven of an acre, that's.
Yeah, the tiny.
Parts, two arts, and so. Okay.
Those are the figures that we're working with in the current draft and these are still moving targets, so, you know, don't take it to the bank yet.
Yeah.
Uh, we got twenty-seven point one at Island Creek with sixteen and a half per acre at four stories. This is significant, right, it's really changing the stories is what drives the, the density and footprint.
Okay.
Um, and.
What's the big building in Island Creek now? How many stories does that have?
You know, I'm driven back there, but I've heard it's four.
I think it's four, I think it's four.
Sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so it's a reasonable spot to stop there, makes sense.
Yeah, it's already close to that, that's at least twelve or something.
Yeah, it's pretty close, yeah.
Um, so then we have Island Creek, the mixed use in the front at five point three acres, which is now gonna be up to eighteen units per acre currently. It doesn't even have residential, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, so that would be a conversion of existing structures or redevelopment of existing structures.
They put a second floor on some of the buildings, third floor or whatever.
Yeah, they have a second now, they're all two story, so that would be three story minimum. Island Creek, Bongies, the residential in the back, quote, unquote, in the back. Um, thirteen units per acre is the density limit there, so it's pretty low compared to, you know, anything else, more like what Island Creek is today.
Yeah, wouldn't be that dense.
Yeah, and up to three stories, and then the mixed use at the front of Bongies, which is only the point seven acres of those two parcels. Uh, up to two stories.
Okay.
Averaging out at eleven point four there.
Okay.
And right now, Emily has a draft, I don't know if it's gone out yet, but let it, the owners and all your butters saying, this is what we have for the plan now, cuz.
Yeah.
Until now, we didn't have a plan, so we can tell them what it is.
What, what's a percentage we're putting on that have to be affordable?
Well, it stands at ten percent.
Ten percent?
The issue is that if you wanna go above ten percent, you have to provide an economic feasibility analysis.
Okay.
We didn't have the money, we didn't have the time.
No, definitely not.
To do EFA.
It's interesting that a forty B is gonna be twenty-five. And their own rules are only saying ten.
And, yeah, well, that's why they put the EFA on there, is that they don't wanna promulgate rules which basically prevent the construction.
Yeah.
And instead get the, you know, payment in lieu or something like that.
I just thought of something I wanted to ask Amy on this.
Oh.
I'll shoot her an email a different time, but, uh, the, the question about apartment units. Which part of the theory on this was, would be that some of these, especially a four story building, would potentially be apartments.
Right.
Um, counting towards affordable housing regardless of what they.
Right, they're rentable.
Rented for, and I know all was saying he thought they had to be de-respected and all these other things. I don't believe that's the case, I believe all the apartments, all apartments count.
That's certainly what I've heard on them.
Has a for the housing cost?
The boards are ten percent, all apartments count, so if we get that four story building to be all.
Yeah.
Apartments, we could get to ten percent, and then we eliminate the condos that all the seniors wanna live in and so.
So, that kind of question you mentioned, so. Will any of these, the mixture, mixed use and the residential be in one building or will they be separate?
Yeah, that is the idea.
And the mixed use would be the combination.
Commercial first floor, residential above, and if Bongies three story, that would be two stories of residential above.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh.
Wait, I'm sorry, go back and say that again.
If you build a three story building, put businesses on the first floor, housing units on both, the second.
Um, okay, but I'm confused, the mixed use says two stories.
It says, that's restricted to two stories.
Oh, and the Bongies, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, no, that's right, well, it's, uh.
Yeah, so in the, in the Island Creek, you could do the three.
But theoretically, in, in Island Creek, you could put a third floor on all those commercial buildings down front and make them residential above. If somebody wanted to go through that expense.
Yep.
Uh, that's, okay, so it's two story.
There are four story building, it's purely residential or a mixed would be one story. Retail or whatever, and then it's, uh, floors two and three would be, uh, residential on top of that?
In Island Creek.
In Island Creek, okay.
Yeah. Now, is there, is there no? No requirement that any of it be affordable? Is there a requirement of, I mean, I know we wanna do affordable, but is the MBTA bylaw require it be. There be affordability section to? I think they assume there will be because of the density, but.
Well, this is where, my understanding right now is that it is a minimum ten percent required.
Okay.
And you get into the, you know, if you wanna go higher, economic feasibility and, and, you know, the whole conversation about density bonus and other things that you do. To encourage that, it immediately comes into play, so they seem to select a ten percent. So they seem to select a ten percent.
Ten percent is way less than a forty B.
Yeah.
Yeah, but what was suggested to me was another site. Yeah, no, I'm over the site discussion again, oh, I'm gonna stand as sure.
Nobody built the Standard Shore.
Twenty acres for sale out on Standard Shore, you know, it's a very expensive condo. Then a lot of people in town would like to live in.
So, how can we go back to this? So why is there a difference?
Done it that way with this.
Yeah.
Well, this particular zoning would allow the condos to go in out there and stand as sure. That's quite a development, it wouldn't be affordable at the end of the day.
By anything as well, there's any, anything that's for, even with the AMI and all that.
That's that's the question, what what is affordable in this town is unaffordable most parts of this system.
So, there's four because.
Why differentiate?
It makes, well.
Why?
It makes the numbers to get to the target number of seventy eighty eight, we've been tweaking this for months.
Yeah, tweak, we're tweaking.
More alley area with less requirement or, you know, it's a dynamic.
We're trying to meet their, we're trying to minimally minimally meet their requirements and not be too crazy on the units per area.
Yeah, and the rationale for making sure we included mixed use on both properties is A, Island Creek already has business there. And B, so does Bonji's, it's Bonji's, it's neighborhood business district.
Bonji's is on a main road too, it doesn't hurt to have some form, if you're gonna have this many housing in there, it'd be nice for a restaurant to go in there or something else.
Mike, I'm sorry, maybe I'm asking the right question, the question is, so if you've got residential three stories, why can't, could you still do mixed use on the first floor and have two stories on top of it? So it's a three story building? But I'm a little confused by what it, what, and with the way that I'm reading mixed use, it looks like you can only have up to, is it up to two stories of mixed use?
At Bonji's.
The standard of mixed use is business first floor, residential above, that's the assumption.
If with Bonji's, it'd be limited to two floors, correct?
Two story structure.
Why not three?
I think the concern with streetscape, three story structure.
Those properties are pretty small and bright, it's only point seven of an acre.
Yeah, they're very small places.
And it's right on the road.
If you're, it is actually green, it's a low metal building.
Yeah.
Bunch of plantings out front, it's open, working.
Yeah.
So it's a small process, having some stories.
Why, why differentiate between residential or mixed use? Why isn't the whole thing mixed use?
It's a good question, and I see, you know, there has been discussion about that, like, why wouldn't you want to have businesses within the.
Right.
Development in the back, so to speak, and the argument was made in the working group that. Um, you know, our businesses in town are already suffering, and we don't really wanna see more businesses built. Further away from the business centers because it's just gonna reduce further.
We have such limited business cent, it's 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 a catch twenty two on our business centers. You you create some more somewhere else, it just bleeds out what we're already doing and we have. We've found with expanding them, we get less successful, and we start losing other places. If part of that, like restaurants, not enough of us go to the restaurants four nights a week.
Yeah.
Which a lot of people don't wanna do, and I understand not wanting to go four nights a week, but if the locals don't support the restaurant, it won't survive the winter, so.
Yeah, so that was, I mean, I didn't find any agreement with that line of reason, but.
Usually the the market won't figure it out, it was something more like that there might be specific needs there, maybe there's, you know, childcare, there's a dry cleaner. Or there's something like that within that particular community would need a coffee shop, something like that.
Anything precludes us from amending this in the future, though too. I think what 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 we need to try to do is get something the town meeting will understand and approve. If they don't approve it, we lose.
Yes.
All that other funding and potentially the seawall funding even.
Yes, so Paul, you actually bring up a really great point, and I sort of hashtagged this earlier, and I was, I wanted to ask. You know, I think one of the things that will be most important is that the planning board supports this, the select board supports this. The the working communities, uh, working group supports this as well, and so I wondered is um.
That's still not a guarantee.
How is, how is the working community doing? Is everybody, did people come onto this thinking, yep, we have to figure out a way to make this work, or did anybody come on thinking, I have zero interest in?
Oh, we have one member who is staunchly opposed, again, he said, he's already evolved his thinking.
Okay.
You know, to understand that we have some, not saying he's supporting.
And I know, did the select board ask you specifically to figure this out? I don't know how you possibly even figure it out. The cost analysis of adding all of these units, it's more police, it's more teachers, it's more fire. It's more ambulances, it, there's a lot of costs involved, cause we we know the costs that we've. Increased in town with Island Creek as it is, so.
All right, we can just stop right there, because there's a couple of things going on, one is that the U T E O H L C guidance. You know, discouraged.
Yeah, they don't care. I was figuring it out.
The the trying to rationalize a.
Not doing it.
Opposition or some prevention of this on a fiscal basis.
Okay.
Um, and in fact, there's language somewhere, if it's in MBTA communities or somewhere else, where they're actually targeting this. There's a line in our plan development that says, no development should unduly burden services. They're basically, they're demanding that we take that out, we can follow by it, so it's it's a, it's a, it's a battle line.
Okay. But it's gonna be one that's, it's gonna be one of the biggest questions that comes.
Correct, and and so we are working on that question, we are doing the research. We're compiling the public safety response data for years and years and years, not just looking at, because that's a source body. I mean, that was a uh, a teething pain that we went through, I call it uh, having stand up municipal landlord services. So we did, and we're still doing it to something, it's an ongoing negotiation with them, but we had the same issue with. Uh, public service emergency response at at Bay Village Con, they use the P F plus.
Mm-hmm.
Because they need a lot of medical support, and we had to put in extra infrastructure years ago.
Yeah.
For that, and people complained about that too, so the thing I always say is that it is, you know, it's the municipality's legal obligation to serve the needs of the residents. And residents come and go all the time, and the population grows all the time. Now, what happens is, according to the latest research that I looked at over the weekend, there's just tons of this, so you have to deal with it. But uh, they did an analysis of all the meetings in Commonwealth. For a couple of decades of population growth and budget growth, and what they identified was that the. Uh, communities where the population is not growing suffer from budget deficits, and the communities where the population is growing actually do better. Because they gain more revenue, development, taxes, revenue, the people come later, so revenue increases and then the costs fall. But if you're not growing, and your costs are instead you're rising, but your revenue is not.
Yeah.
So the growth actually supports the budget, according to that analysis.
Okay.
Now, where does Doug's really fall in that analysis? I don't know, I haven't put the core to him.
Yeah, understandable, understandable.
So it is part of that, I wonder if there's been any conversation about how much tax or um, property tax would be generated from that? Is is our way to figure that out, maybe? That might answer as part of your.
Well, the problem then is you have to, you have to make an assumption.
Yes, you have to make a lot of assumptions.
Assumption goes this way, change the assumptions, poof, it goes that way.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's arbitrary.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be important to get an answer to Scott's question on, do all the apartments count towards the ten percent? Because what do we all know in the town, what's the other biggest element, forty B? So if we, as part of the public outreach on this, you can say if all the apartments count and gets us over that threshold.
Right.
You then take the forty B threat off the table, and that may people, that may change the lens that people view the MBTA communities act.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we require it to be apartments though?
No, no.
So there's no guarantee. Wait, can we require it to be uh, affordable housing?
Ten percent?
Ten percent, but that just keeps us status quo, right? It doesn't even help, like forty B's twenty five percent, and if it's ten percent, you're losing ground.
Yeah.
So, Pat, can you get the question answered about, so say if there's ten percent, say if there's ten percent and set aside, but they're all apartments. Do they all count? Can you find that out?
We have a ten percent requirement, but. Any building three stories and greater has to be apartments, I bet they wouldn't let us do that.
No, you can't require it.
No, but uh, but can you find out if they would?
I've heard the question asked, and every time we've tried to get an answer.
Yeah, we get mumble jumble, right?
Well, it couldn't be asked, but the the most authoritative answer I've heard is that, yes, all of the rental units do count.
That's what I.
But the problem is that we have to do our homework and we have to do all this filing, and we have to keep track of.
Yes.
The property owner and landlord and the status, and nobody's doing that, there's nobody in the sound responsible for that.
You have to submit all that information for them to count, in fact, a whole bunch of Island Creek fell off.
Exactly.
Of the rent rolls, if you wanna put it in those terms, as the things that counted for us because nobody sent in another report.
Correct.
And this has been going on forever, the planning director would go, that's that person's job, and every, nobody wanted to do the job because it's torture.
Yeah.
And, cause you have to track them all as they come up, and then reapply, like, re-recertify them.
Yes, right. So they should count, but you think, no.
We can have them fall off and just by accident.
And when the Affordable Housing Trust came in with this, it seemed like they had really been working hard to have a pretty active identity role.
They have been working at that and trying to make sure that they have it in a form that can be submitted.
Right.
Again, that will, we get a new town planner, that will come right back at the town planner again, and we have to kind of push back, you guys are handling it now, you should handle it. And see how that works.
So, Tag, one of the other things I was thinking about with this is that it'll be, uh, you know, public outreach is really important, so one of the things, uh, maybe. If the committee could talk about was figure out like, who's your best public speaker? To to give the presence, maybe like somebody introduces, but you have like somebody who's known and who's very comfortable and can provide, you know, can help explain things. Quite a lot of context at a town meeting, um, but then also, as your team, as the committee talked about, actually starting to send in uh, letters to the editor. The first, or to like, like, here are messages, here are eight messages, what's everybody going to write?
Yeah.
And then one of the other things too is that the Affordable Housing Trust and then also um. Mullens, Kevin Mullens Group.
Yeah, that's free for all.
I know, uh, what was that, were they thinking to talk to us, the the agent?
That's. Yeah, that's.
Cause they're they're, they came to us and talked to us about, we wanna partner with you on housing, and so if we could, that might be a really good move to partner with. Cause I think there's an element of if the, if we, if the planning board and the committee decide, yes, we're endorsing this. And yes, we're going forward, and the select board is too, we'll wanna have advocates who can, who can um. Explain, provide different points.
Of course, in fact, you know, we are actively working with all these organizations, I've sat in a couple of meetings, and um. I have to reiterate what Brian reiterated at our last working group meetings, that the working group starts with producing and mapping the bylaws, final report and recommendation. And as especially elected members of the Pope, uh, and special town employees, we're prohibited from advocating or lobbying. For this, it's it's very clear, it's it's later, a disclaimer at the beginning of every meeting, so we can go and communicate to people.
Yes, yes.
And and give them information, and even talk about talking points with them, we have to stop. You can't like be excited about it, we can't be pushing people, you can't do that, so it's a little tough to advocate.
So does that apply to us? I I hadn't heard that before.
I know.
We're not allowed to advocate, so if we have a new bylaw, we can't advocate for that?
No, we advocate all the time, we're elected.
So we're elected, are you saying because the committee, the working committee is not?
Working group has a charge.
They have a different, okay, got it.
Part of that is not selfless.
Okay, okay, I understand.
It's just put it together and give us the presentation and town takes it from there.
Okay, I I think just maybe.
What happens is, if the group gets up and gives the presentation.
Yeah.
Then somebody's gonna get up for, and somebody's gonna get up against, and a bunch of people are gonna start asking questions, and that's how the whole thing will develop. And the group can answer the questions, or the planning board can answer the question, and we'll take turns answering stuff as we need to.
Yeah, so what we're trying to do, really working with, you know, really good volunteers on the working group is is compiling this information, so. Um, and I, that leads actually into the second part of the discussion, let's go through the bylaw development status, that's kind of the particulars, and then we'll talk about the schedule. Uh, so yeah, right now, we have uh, the 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 nitty gritty, right, setbacks, buffers, dimensions. We have a Paul, have Kiotis identified that we can restrict the primary access entrance to be on the state road. Cause it's a state mandate, we're already on three eight eight at Creek, and then Bonji's, we're just trying to prevent them putting some kind of huge entrance in on Otman.
On Otman.
There's gotta be maybe utility access or something, emergency, something restricted, so he seems to be that.
Otman would not be very happy if.
No, I mean, stink of that traffic on it, cause it's a terrible point, uh, but the first item in there I'd like us to discuss, because. The situation is that, you know, the state is actually funding the work of the consultants to push the bylaws into the town. So we're getting, uh, no, Sebo.
Yeah.
And the proposal that we got from the consultants, uh, difficult to parse, because it's like. M B T Communities, Multi-Family Mixed Use, M U M C Mac dash one, dash two, it's just hairy. And I suggested that we not use those, we come up with something that makes sense to Duxbury. And they went around and around, and they consulted with the state, they came back and said, oh yeah, you can actually do that, you can call it whatever you want.
Call it whatever you want, as long as it meets our guidelines.
Look at, you know, what we have, put something in that's concordant with that, it's far more like that, we have plan development, one, two, and three. That's the closest thing to this, except it's all single thing, I mean, I would like nothing more than to be able to say, here's three changes to our P D laws. That meets MBTA communities, we can't do that, we've already covered that, not possible, it has to be a new bylaw. So now what we're doing is we're importing chunks of our existing bylaws to massage MBTA communities to be compatible with our standards here. That's how it's going.
Okay.
All right, so what do we call them? Uh, right now, uh, it's still MBTA communities, something or other like. M M U for mixed use, and M C or M F F, multi-family.
What about forced MBTI?
I didn't suggest it to, to Paul.
I mean, why not? They can't object to that name.
You know, it's transit oriented neighborhood, it's like, we call it tons, it's a ton of house.
The ton housing, that works.
Yeah.
What is Island Creek? What is this? Is there zoning overlay there? Have a similar kind of name?
I don't remember what that's called, that one. Wasn't that just in plan development? I think that was just in the, in the P D district.
I think it is P D, yeah.
Yeah, it was just such a large property, the way that it was set up, that it took a P D to to the extreme. Is what it did, I believe that's all that that was.
Yeah, and Bonji's is all nursing and N B.
It's P D and forty B, and that's how they jam it all through.
Maybe P D four or P D ten or something, I don't know.
Well, no, it's clearly a divergence.
They want it to be its own section of the bylaw, basically, right?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, the way I've explained it to the working group is, they said the options, right, right, a clean new drop in or overlay on what we already have. But the state's gotta review this, so if we make it self-contained, the state can review it self-contained. And then they can try and reach into the rest of the bylaw, we can say no, but if it's overlaid with everything else.
They're thinking of look at what else we're saying.
Open the whole can of worms, yeah, so it really does need to be freestanding, so to speak.
Freestanding, gleaming, things we do within the rest of the bylaws, not a bad, you know.
Yeah.
Bad approach.
Yeah, and so I I've actually been trying to, uh, one of the things, for example, is with plan development, you know, there's a thing in there about. We did a vegetative screening, and there's actually a thing about the setback is extended by the height of building.
Yeah.
Those types of things, maybe we wanna put those, and there's no reason we can't.
Yeah.
But the working group doesn't have the experience with the zoning bylaws to be able to say, well, that's a good idea, or this is a bad idea. So ideally, as my liaison, I would be able to take their proposals and ideas, get them concisely bolted down.
Mm-hmm.
So you guys can consider it, and get your opinion back to them.
Yeah, keep public hearings on it anyway. We are, but the public hearings are after it's done. We have to have final language before we can have the hearing, so it's, it's, yeah, well, we can make, we usually, we make tweaks based on what the public tells us. But they have to be mine.
Matt, Matt, have you ever seen anything interesting name from Interleg?
I think you just call it MBTA.
Yeah, and that's.
We put on them.
This is coming up in my firm too, because we represent a lot of developers, we do some towns where I didn't. It's MBTA for the most part.
Is that what they're calling it?
Yeah, I mean. It's already got the stigma of the MBTA attached to it, that's where everybody is referring to it, whether they're on the, in the town or or just. For, you know, town folk discussing it, uh, but, you know, we, I haven't come across yet, because a lot of towns have it implemented. A lot of towns are in the same spot we're at, so our developer clients aren't, it it just hasn't come across our board yet, and um. The current draft is referring to these as M O D, lower density, M O D, higher density, and mixed use, M U. That's what we have, mod and mu, right, which is pretty badass.
I do think you take the stigma away from it without keeping the MBTA out of the title of it.
That's why I was saying transit oriented.
What's that mod?
M O D, it's.
What's the O?
Does it change? Oh, here, multi-family overlay district, M O D.
There you go, M O D. Multi, multi-use overlay.
MBTA communities, multi-family overlay district.
Mixed, mixed.
And the others, mixed use, multiple mixed use.
Overlay district.
Multi-family mixed use.
I think I like the first word, simply.
Well, they're two different things.
Do we have to have both of them?
Yeah, because of mixed use.
Oh, because of the mixed use section?
Yeah. Mod, mixed mod?
Yeah.
It's clear, I, so I.
I don't have much.
Yeah, I just wanna say.
What it'll be, just pick those two then.
Those two are there.
Would be, I mean, that's what guys wanna do, something different. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, what else do we have on here? Buffers, dimensions, entrances, height is another issue we're trying to grapple with. In addition to saying how many floors, do you actually have a way to say how tall it can be or not, and just say floors and that's it, we wanna see a fifty foot.
We have a fifteen foot story, fifteen story store, fifteen story floor. Yeah, that's a lot.
Floors, that's a lot, that's like, you probably want some type of.
Especially with the M V where it's first floor commercial, it's typically.
Can you limit what mixed use is? Is it just?
Okay, that's, yes, there is, there are set of permitted, our buy rate uses, which is very young. And then there's a small set of additional uses, we discussed whether we just refer to the existing use.
I was gonna say, just go by our own bylaw, might not allow, we'll be already allowing.
I push back on that, because the existing uses and permitted uses and special permit uses aren't based on single acre zoning, and this is not that. So to just lift that and drop that in here, it just doesn't make sense. Mm-hmm. It's a different environment to appreciate.
Well, our commercials zones are. I think it's all. Our commercial business, you can have fifty feet of front.
Yeah.
In the commercial, they can be tiny, no setbacks, no nothing, so our uses, I think our our uses we allow in the town of Duckspur. Would be the uses we want in the commercial district, I think. I don't think we wanna let anything we don't allow elsewhere in town into it.
Yeah, well, what we have now is much more restrictive. So what I'd like to recommend is that we are finalizing the current draft, and we'll have a couple of iterations. You know, I'd like to have any planning board member have the opportunity to review that in their comments or.
So you're saying that the uses allowed in what you're setting up are more restrictive than the town's uses?
Yes.
Well, I can't see wanting to put an auto body shop in under. I think you you restrict yourself to our N, our N B uses, but not go as far as N B two. N B two is all auto, majority auto-related and high, higher pollution and noise.
What we've been discussing is N B one to be like, and we even discussed the the drive-through issue and took drive-throughs out of there. Because we didn't wanna have people going into the development to use a drive-through.
Yeah, don't wanna do that. Don't want the Starbucks going in there and.
Right.
Backing up all the traffic, but no, I think you're right. Just keep N B two out of it.
Uh, so that's the last part, right? Special versus mixed um, permit in mixed use. The only one I wanted to mention is, uh, you know, it's supposed to be public transit-oriented development, so. I feel as if there should be something in the bylaw that mandates, I know, some sort of a bus stop. You know, bike racks.
I was just gonna say, you wanna put up like one of those shelters for the bus stop and see if anybody gets a meeting there?
That's the question I'd like to ask the planning board, you know, in terms of trial law, have you?
We have gap trial.
May may fulfill the mandate that this is transit-oriented development.
Why tell, we say we tell the state to get an M B T A bus to bring people to the train station? We shouldn't pay.
Can we do that somehow in our bylaw? They're pushing on.
We would, we would like, we're a little too far away, no matter where we pick in town, so we would like you to provide a bus to bring people to the train station. On an hourly basis, seven days a week. We can't build it.
Open to any ideas of how we can codify that, you know?
Yeah, yeah. I get, I would think that 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 any and all the communities could ask back, so since we're adjacent, we're not.
Right.
We're not in, we're adjacent, obviously, we're further away. We're 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 more than happy to put through what you're looking for here, but for these people to get to the mass transit. Mass transit should be providing transportation from our developments to the to the transit. Not making it reliable on them driving, driving their own cars and finding someplace to park it.
And they have said in guidance that.
Yeah, remember, Kingston puts a bunch of this in, we put a bunch in, and people are trying to commute. The train in Kingston doesn't have enough parking spaces for everybody to be commuting.
With you just sitting there on the head of what the true motivation of the state can put this, it's not, not commuter, it's it's multi-family.
It's just to get us higher density so that they can move more people.
Right.
More urbanize us.
That's right.
Uh, by moving more people down out of congested areas. And to get them a better school system. There was. Yeah, my wife and I were moving back to town, we looked for years and years and years, built house in Alphast, built house in Kingston. It's too expensive to go where we want to be.
All right, can we bring it back as? Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Uh, I think we covered all of that. Uh, the the guys did say that this is not mandating the the creation of public transportation. Or forcing communities to build public transportation, so they're trying to, you know.
Yeah.
Beat that argument back and forth.
Yes.
Um, so. I think we can scroll up off of this. We're doing a lot of this, what you mentioned.
That's it.
Oh, is that it? All right, well, there's a schedule item in there. Uh, basically, what I'm trying to do right now is pin down. The production of the deliverables. There's the map, the bylaw, and the report, right? And the map, done, let's call it done. The bylaw in development, we've got draft one, we get two more shots at that.
Mm-hmm.
So, and it's not good without a planner, because usually the planner is the quarterback that receives the ball, like the consultant pitches. Uh, you know, we're having to lean on Emily very heavily, and I'm trying to work as closely as I can with her to fulfill that role. It's a major risk for this project right now, because we don't have that. Full-time dedicated person to receive the thing, I mean, even the first draft that they sent to Paul. It's a hairy dog, he spent a few hours going through it, and this is wrong, this needs to change, this needs to get, so it's.
We have to, we're gonna have to send it to.
Again, Stan Tech is coming at it from the state, the state is funding them, and they're just saying, here's the world of play, go for it. But they have done some of the work to bring in our requirements, and they said, you know, you found this, we think you want that, and we're like, yes, you're correct, so it's it's moving.
Okay.
But it's not. You know, as as well structured as I would like. So what we're gonna do at the next meeting is set out that editorial schedule. When will the next draft of the bylaw will be done? Who will it be sent to? How long is the window of the comment? How are we gonna process those comments in the draft after that? And then I'm trying to interleave the bylaw with the report. So that as the bylaw evolves, report evolves, and the bylaw will be finished, and then the report will be.
Yeah.
And then we'll all go out. I gotta try and keep those things on a one or two-week cadence. We're just out of time already, you know, we had to go to the select board and ask for more time.
It's been shoved down our throats, so there's been no time really for towns to really, even if you started on it immediately, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I've been looking at it since you came out, like, when are we gonna get going? When are we gonna get going? And we were like, oh, we're gonna.
I know.
So, yeah, I know you, sorry, sorry.
Okay, so what is, do you have a tentative schedule for public outreach meetings, or you can't do that until you're a little bit further down?
Well, the first day of tech meeting is not that, it's September fifth, we're having open house. Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there's gonna be another one after that in October.
Town council, given the group any indication as to where the courts are gonna come down on the existing lawsuits from the other towns? Because that's gonna be one of the questions that's gonna come up, right? Um, a- and I can tell you as an attorney, I think it's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, well, that's why we're skipping out, he doesn't wanna be.
Yeah.
Giving information and advice on a moving target, I mean, I can understand that hesitation.
Yeah, I didn't know if town council had given any guidance on where they think it might.
I have not personally, I don't know what conversations Paul made.
I think nobody knows.
I think we have to pick a side, by the D. We do.
I share with you what I'm trying to do now, and I haven't, this is an idea that I've tried to bring to the chair, and we haven't fleshed it out. But what I personally need is a decision tree. Just lay out some way to sequence the thinking, because there's just too many issues flying around. So, and I don't wanna start with yes or no. That's the end.
That's when we vote.
Yeah, you have to kind of walk through all the alternatives and the implications of each, so that's the the vision that I have. And it's not quite under trees, probably one of those fishbone diagrams, you know, where you see. You can hang balls up that say risk, benefit, risk, benefit, and just to get it all on one page, that's what I'm trying to do right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
A lot of work.
Yeah, it's gonna get even more interesting.
Yes. And then then it all comes down to a five-minute vote, and everybody brings the box.
That's right. I there's just, I think, just one thing left on agenda, and that's the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and that is something that uh, it. We do every few years. It's, it lasts for five years, it takes two years to do it, it's expire, ours expired a year or two ago. Um, it will cost twenty-four thousand dollars for us to hire consultants from M A P C. And um, we don't have that in our budget, so there's been a lot of talk, uh, so one of the things that's affected by that is. We can't apply for or receive any grants from B M A. And so that includes like the beach north, and so there's a lot of 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 grants in play there. Um, so then we can't apply for things, uh, anything else. Um, so the. The customer residency task force is really trying to make sure that we have this. I was really hot, it was high on Paul's agenda, too. So there's been conversation with Mary McKinnon, she has, it sounds, looks like she's actually reached out to uh, Rainy, Rainy, our town manager. To see if we can use ARBA money to fund that, and if he says yes, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, because then we can go straight into the contract with them, get it done, get it done quickly.
That would, that would be.
Because the update to it is, shouldn't take long.
Yeah, two years.
It's like a year-to process.
For what we already have, just to be updated and resubmitted?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we're gonna change anything that we did.
I exactly, exactly.